One, we'll ask you the latest in work prayer.
Almighty God, our heavenly Father, as we bow before you tonight, Lord, thank you for loving us and helping us and just being with us, Lord, and guiding us. We just pray, heavenly Father, that you'd bless the sick people out there, bless the people that's got this virus, Lord, just heal them if it could be your will. Bless all the sick people out there, Lord, be with them and comfort them and heal them if it could be your will also, Lord. We pray now, heavenly Fathers, we're going to our meeting, we just pray that you'd guide us, Lord, in the decisions that we make, help us to help this little town. And, God, we just love our little town, and we just pray that you'd help us to help the town, Lord. And we ask now, heavenly Father, that you'd just be with us, Lord, and forgive us all who we fail you, and we'll give you the praise for all, in Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody up to the council meeting on June twenty-second, two thousand twenty. Need a motion to call the meeting to order? Second?
Say.
All in favor? Alright, number two, need a motion to cover only what's on the agenda?
Motion.
Second? All in favor? Alright, item three, reading of the minutes, six eight twenty.
The Hackleburg Town Council met in regular session on June eighth, two thousand twenty, at six thirty P. M. Mayor Culver asked for a motion to call the meeting to order. Councilmember Lawley made a motion and was seconded by Councilmember Kevin Warne. Councilmember Don Warne led everyone in prayer, and a pledge was said by all. The attendance is listed below. Mayor Culver stated that the meeting was open for the transaction of business. A motion was made by Councilmember Wigginton and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Warne to cover only the items on the agenda. Voting was as follows, all a's, no nays. The mayor asked the clerk to read the minutes from the May twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty meeting. After reading, a motion was made by Councilmember Wigginton and was seconded by Councilmember Don Warne to accept as presented. Voting was as follows, all a's, no nays. The clerk presented the mayor and council with a financial statement for them to review. After looking over, a motion was made by Councilmember Don Warne and seconded by Councilmember Wigginton to accept as presented. Voting was as follows, all a's, no nays. The clerk presented the mayor and council with a check register for them to look over. After reviewing, a motion was made by Councilmember Wigginton and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Warne to accept as presented. Voting was as follows, all a's, no nays. The mayor and council discussed garbage pickup. Councilmember Kevin Warne would like to have our street guys to pick up the garbage next to Billy Paul Nichols' home. The mayor thought it would be okay for them to do so. The mayor and council discussed the paving project. The bid opening was on June fifth, and the low bid was the Rogers Group at four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. The bid was actually over budget, but the mayor explained that the engineer was going to sit down with the guys at Rogers Group and see if some of the cost could be lower to make this bid work. The Fourth of July was discussed. Most cities are canceling their fireworks this year. The mayor wants to try to have hours if possible. Of course, social distancing will have to be mandatory. Everyone was in favor of trying to go ahead with their show. Mayor Culver stated that he would make sure that it will be okay with the state. The mayor and council discussed renting the senior building and disinfecting afterwards. The clerk stated that she had ordered a disinfectant fogger machine so the building could be cleaned after a rental. The mayor and council were all in agreement that the building could be rented now that we can clean and disinfect the buildings. The mayor and council wanted to welcome a new business to town. Hackleburg Nutrition is up and running. They will be serving all flavors of vitamin-packed teas and shakes. Good luck to them. Assistant Chief David Crittenen is requesting to attend a course in Orange Beach on September twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. He addressed the council and explained the benefits of this course. A motion was made by Councilmember Don Warne and seconded by Councilmember Wigginton to allow Officer Crittenen to attend said class. Voting was as follows, all a's, no nays. Chief Jonathan Oates brought some quotes to the meeting for fire extinguishers and for cars, and for the, for fire extinguishers for the cars and two wireless mic kits. A motion was made by Councilmember Lawley and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Warne to purchase. Voting was as follows, all a's, no nays. There being no further business to come before the council, a motion was made by Councilmember Wigginton and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Warne to adjourn.
Yeah, I've heard the reading of the minutes, any questions or comments? Yeah, they've been working on the roads, trying to get them prepped. On the fogging machine, we did get that in, got it put together, and the street guys will disinfect the senior building tomorrow. So, we rented it out over the weekend. Need a motion to accept the minutes on six eight? Kevin, second? Tabby, all in favor?
I'm moving next minutes at six eighteen and not five.
Yeah. Need to call a special meeting to pass the resolution, so Carolyn will have you read the minutes of six eighteen.
The Hackleburg Town Council met in special session on June eighteen, two thousand twenty, at six thirty P. M. Mayor Culver asked for a motion to call the meeting to order. Councilmember Lawley made a motion and was seconded by Councilmember Wigginton. Councilmember Kevin Warne led everyone in prayer, and a pledge was said by all. The attendance is listed below. Mayor Culver stated that the meeting was open for the transaction of business. A motion was made by Councilmember Lawley and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Warne to cover only the items on the agenda. Voting was as follows, all a's, no nays. This special meeting was called to pass two resolutions awarding the paving contract to Rogers Group. Before voting on the two resolutions, the council had some questions. They were concerned passing these as read and wanted to make sure that the contract would remain in budget. The mayor explained to the council that the low bidder was, still wanted the job even though levelling and patching was taken out. The lower, this lowered the material cost approximately ninety thousand dollars. Mayor Culver called Jason Baggett with the engineering firm, Civil Group, for a conference call. He verified what the mayor had told the council members. Jason answered their questions and informed that they have an onsite inspector giving a real-time count of material used to make sure that the town has the ability to stay within budget. As to the passing of Resolution two thousand twenty dash zero zero four to award Rogers Group Inc. with the contract for CDB Project SMCM PF nineteen oh four seven, a motion was made by Councilmember Don Warne and was seconded by Councilmember Wigginton to pass said resolution. Voting was as follows, all a's, no nays. As to the passing of Resolution two thousand twenty dash oh oh five to award Rogers Group with the contract for Aldoc Project ST oh four seven nine 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 oh one five CN, a motion was made by Councilmember Don Warne and was seconded by Councilmember Lawley to pass said resolution. Voting was as follows, all a's, no nays. There being no further business to come before the council, a motion was made by Councilmember Marbit and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Warne to adjourn.
You've heard the reading of the minutes, any comments or questions?
Oh, is that state resolution number, that last?
No. Don, you ought to have it on your paper, but. Alright, need a.
A minute to get started, or?
They moved some equipment up here today, two pavers, and the rain's probably gonna hold them up for another two, but, yeah, they're.
They're gonna start over on Indian Hill first.
They're ready to go. Alright, need a motion?
Motion to accept the minutes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Everybody? Alright, item five, paying the bills? You know what the Murphy Brothers car look like, that is right off?
Um, there were four plates that was purchased.
Bushog?
Bushog plates.
About we can tie our, put tires on the head?
Yeah. I told them we would try to stay local while we could on tires, and long as, you know, it's competitive. Alright, need a motion to pay the bills? Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor? Everybody? Alright, new business, uh, welcome Don Wallace to present the audit for two thousand nineteen.
Pardon, I will make your second picture of buckle wheel thirty thirty from nineteen sixty-eight.
Man, you get it down, I see it. I know the wrong.
If I charge a little more, I might get far.
We don't want to pay for it.
Y'all don't want to pay for it, I'll see if, I'll find somebody else. Anyway, it's pretty good, so. Oh, you're good to be with you, I didn't have your audit for last September fiscal year, already this COVID stuff's got everybody's schedules a little bit behind. Glad to be here and get everything finished up for you, so I'll just kind of briefly try to run through some of the high points, things that were of note maybe last year, talk about a couple of things maybe going forward, depending on how important, anyway. Oh, but you can see just a cover sheet that I gave you, it's just really more of a courtesy item, just to let the public know that audit's been completed, required by state law, and all that kind of thing available for public inspection. And I know you can post on the doors, whatever you might choose to, maybe up on the window or something like that. It does just really kind of give a big summarized totals, your total revenues, count water and sewer sanitation fees were a million seven hundred and twelve thousand. Your expenses, you know, they're a million eight eighty-two, so it shows you a deficit, which we've kind of talked about before. More years than that, you're probably gonna run that because of depreciation on all this sewer and grant assets, so we have to book and to run it right off over time. So that is, you know, a number that gets affected kind of disproportionately in that regard. But, you know, obviously you can see your general administrative, policing, court, your street, and then your water activities. Your main areas are kind of what drive your expenses, and this includes all your depreciation, which I'll kind of talk about in a minute. But your net worth, as far as your assets, unless your liabilities, are still over nine point two million, nine million two hundred and eight thousand. So, that's again, it's just something you can use to pose, keep copies, you know, all of you have copies, but we could tweak the time on that if you want to, or just leave it as is, I had put six o'clock on. Second item is your management letter. Probably the more important of the items that we actually go over, is kind of look at if there's any findings, any significant problems that we found during the audit, anything of that nature. We did not have anything we missed as a big material weakness or a departure in that regard, so that's good, that's what we obviously want. Try to maintain that. On the second page, did make a few comments, just again, one kind of goes back to that negative change on the government-wide net assets. You had some higher expenses in some areas where you spent some funds last year, but then some revenue decreases from the year before, you know, I think we were in a positive. Last time, we'd also sold a lot of excess equipment, things like that, so those kind of things are gonna make you jump up and down. A smaller municipality, you're just gonna see that stuff a lot more prevalent, and it's a lot more noticeable than if it's the city of Tuscaloosa or Florence or something moving things around. But I would note that your depreciation charges were two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, so when you factor that back down, your cash balance has actually increased over eighty thousand dollars versus the prior year. So, we kind of balance that back out, you had a good year financially overall. As far as our audit test procedures on receipts, disbursements, looking at payroll taxes in particular, things like that, all those things appear to be paid and filed timely filed. Just, I know, I believe you get assistance with the retirement, which is very big help, because they changed the retirement rules and how that has to be paid and filed, so. I know the lady helps us with that. Probably the one area that's kind of, you know, comes to my mind as I think about your audit and similar municipalities that are trying to do what you do, right? And you think about it, you've got pretty full-service activity going on between court and police departments, your water and sewer sanitation departments. Then you factor in things, you probably are doing it similar municipalities or not with your education funds. And of course, you came through all that grant period of time after the tornado and recovery, and unfortunately, some of that's wound down. But then you still have other things coming on, and so when you kind of look at the volume of all the funds and accounts that have to be maintained and reconciled, it's just important to continue your regular review of income statements, look at balance sheets. And it's not to point out, you know, hey, something that the clerk's doing wrong, there's no way she can manage all of that, and without getting some help to review those things. And so I know you do look at budgets and questions about that, she communicates with us about questions that may come up, which y'all may have from time to time, so we try to help with that. But to just continue to do that, and, you know, if your fee accountant can assist with some mid-year quarterly adjustments and things, that's not a bad idea, it's, you know, obviously costs a little money. You know, you could really kind of make this argument that with the amount of things that the clerk has to deal with, you think about election years, and things that come along on top of that, and then you're trying to run the water department, you're just about needing that third person, you're really, you're really just about there. So it's either kind of that, or it's trying to utilize your fee accountants and things to do some stuff from really an internal control standpoint, part of it. You know, you want other eyes on there from the taxpayer's interest, but then you also want other eyes or help to make sure things are flowing and minimize just mistakes it can give me. And that just obviously can happen, we know, so those are just, I guess, that's kind of the one area that I would kind of encourage you to think about going forward, is are you kind of, at what point are you at that, needing that assistance to manage all that? You know, if something's looking different as we come out of this, you know, situation with the coronavirus and all that, and how are we gonna handle things going forward, what's court gonna look like? How many things are being done online, all that's gonna come into play, but I think just as you kind of move into the next year and things like that, oh, I would really kind of encourage you to kind of think about that as you go forward. That's a management letter, again, no material weaknesses or, you know, significant issues that we found during the audit, things obviously we're in, working with the staff, and a lot of routine adjustments that get made for some of the accruals and things of that nature that have to be done. You know, your clerk staff typically not gonna be the ones making that, and they do a pretty good job of maintaining your payables on your system, and so that part, a lot of that's already done when you come in, a lot of times that's not the case. So some of those things were already being done, that's good work on their part. Audit report, I'll just kind of be brief, there's what we call our opinion letters in the front, that's just what we refer to as a clean opinion, you don't have to go back and read it, there's nothing that's a fault or anything there. Pages three through seven, what we call it, management's discussion section, there's just a lot of comparative data, different things that may point out to really more of an outside interest, like reading about what's going on, or just a big overview of town government, things that might be happening, talks about the retirement actuaries, and talks about the net asset, and kind of how the depreciation impacts all of that. So anyway, that's about four pages of that, and we've kind of already covered some of the broader issues that were in terms of, you know, revenue ups and downs and expenses and things you had going on. Does some summaries of debt and things of that nature through the areas of will, so those are just normal. Page nine and ten are where we derive all this summary information, we looked at on that first sheet, it pulls all the assets, liabilities together, depreciations factored in, all the municipal things. If you think about the utility department we're gonna look at, we factored depreciation on the regular statements for that, so it's supposed to operate like a business, so you'll see that in just a minute. But those are really kind of unusual statements, particularly the income statement side of it, on page ten, I don't know if I've spent a lot of time on that at all. But page twelve and thirteen kind of give you a snapshot of all your governmental funds and activities, and I'll skip over most of the details in the back, because I know you did start doing budgets and looking at your details and so on, you know, you see a lot of that, I'll make some adjustments and things that happened, but. Adjustments maybe for things like avenue or RDS collection fees, as Carla may not enter, we come into it as an audit entry, but it's not anything wrong, so. But page twelve gives you just kind of an overview of your, what we call the governmental fund side of the house, so you can kind of see where things like the general fund, which is gonna encompass your regular checking account, court falls in that category, because it's just really a function of running the police activities and things through the court and occupational taxes, really just a general revenue source. You collect it and then take the money and transfer it over from cash flow, that's usually you get here usually two or three times a year. But your total assets there were three hundred eighty-five thousand, if you look at liabilities, accounts payable, payroll, court, we got utilities, garbage, other things are in that, there was, she had a complete list of all those payables, but nothing was. Ordinary there, payroll liabilities were not excessive when you look at your quarterly payroll taxes, retirement, just due and things like that, so, you know, issues there. You can see kind of what was maintained in the balances in your sanitation account specifically, the school tax funds, which you kind of keep in reserve, of course, the grant funds, you had some accounts, still some accounts there. And then the non-major funds, I'll look at briefly with you in the back, which are all the four, five cent gas taxes and all that. Page thirteen would show you how much overall revenue is coming from those categories, so you took in about eight hundred and forty-one thousand on your general fund, which is primarily sales, property, related taxes, and then sanitation, school tax funds, which you brought in a little over eighty-three thousand, the worst eighty-six thousand in schools last year. The grant funds were really just in a holding pattern for the most part. If you'll note in the bottom right-hand corner of thirteen, your changes were positive twenty-two thousand before you get into transfers and some of those things. Basically what happened is we ended up netting out about twenty-one thousand dollar transfer of water, which may or may not, yes, sir, may or may not be cash flow issues, it could just partly be where we've allocated some expenses and we're paying for this, and the reimbursements come in and it's just not balanced out, or maybe the insurance bill's not allocated precisely, so we may be coming back behind there, going, hey, that ten thousand dollars was really water, and y'all just paid out of the general for it, so we just have to kind of balance some of that out. But again, that's not a big number, really, twenty-one thousand's not a big number, so not an alarming figure for that, you're gonna see some of that back and forth, as much shared activity sometimes as you have, so. That's kind of the big view on the fund level stuff, really probably one another area that I know the utility board or the council interested in as far as page seventeen and eighteen. Skip over to the back to get through that shit up. But page seventeen just shows you where the water sewer system was at, in terms of, not a lot of cash, but about twenty-seven thousand, and receivables are gonna be what's being billed and collected and outstanding net of some estimates from bad debt that we have to calculate for you. The meter deposit fund had really about double what was required, you know, about thirty-eight thousand showing as deposit balances, so you had excess money there, really kind of, you know, you don't call it forced savings or something, but it's extra funds that were there at the end of the year. Did you see your capital plant was valued at four million eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, that's after backing out depreciation, so that's a pretty big number, and that's, if you think about depreciation over time, that's the one place that number gets to kind of be important in our minds, is that's representative of declining value. So even though we got that negative, and we know a lot of this was grant funded, what do we look like ten, fifteen years from now? Yes, some of those things have to start having a lot more maintenance, do we have the revenue or the sustained tax base to, customer base to flip that? Payables at the bottom, and they're split up of long-term and short-term, or current portion of long-term debt, no, we don't have a lot of debt really on anything for the most part. Page eighteen gives you your income and expenses for that department, we recognized five hundred fifty-nine thousand in total operating revenues, your cost of water is high, I mean, it's, but it is, and that's just something that's gotta kind of continue to monitor, look at what your rates are, I know you don't want to go up, but you're looking at over, well over fifty percent of the cost on last year in there. Salary, labor, taxes, retirements, you don't carry a lot of extra employees on there, but you can kind of see what your major expenses are in operating maintenance, chemical supplier is obviously the big one there. If you look at the bottom, if you move on down to the very bottom, will show a, at the third line, well, fourth line, about fifth line from the bottom, you'll see the change before the little transfer numbers calculated in there of a negative one thirty-two. But again, the depreciation part of that's one fourteen almost, so you're a real negative on that number when you back the depreciation out of it, and that kind of looks, like I said, without. And that kind of looks, like I said, without spending a lot of time, but just look at page nineteen. If you can't get about, nearly to the bottom of that column down there, kind of to the right, shows a negative seventeen thousand. So that's not a big swing on your cash flow when you look at stuff, so basically you had to have about a twenty thousand dollar coverage, was kind of pretty much evening that out. Don't see any big issues there, again, it's just that reminder, like we talked about, the long-term planning aspect of the system and the depreciation number, when you think about it, it's like, hey, we didn't pay for all that, those customers. A lot of that given quote to you, but that probably won't be given to you next time. So when all things, when, when all those big repairs start coming to you, like you see some of the other towns are struggling and fighting with. We're trying to redo systems right now, it is tough. We got, we have several plans, so that's just a battle. So that's, that's, again, that's thinking ten, fifteen years down the road even perhaps, but like I said, I will skip over a lot of this, but page forty is revenues for the general fund, and you've got budgets and trying to, you know, forecast that, that I think is getting better, obviously, cause you hadn't had budgets there for a long time, so that's, that will get better. You've had some special deposits from some of the gas system and county stuff that went on, so that's fluctuated some the last couple of years. Page forty-one and two are the expenses, and again, primarily, you know, you've got general government, police, and the, the street sanitation are your major areas. Nothing that really stands out to me, other than if you look at your administrative side at the top of forty-one, you get to collection fees. That's your avenue charges for sales taxes and so forth, which are really small, paid thirteen thousand for that. And there's no way your staff could try to administer that stuff for anywhere close to that, that money, you just, you gotta keep doing that. Police department had debt service, which I know we actually didn't pay it off, that debt after, I guess, what, December, January, sometime in there, you actually paid off that last payment on the main board stuff. So that, you got that out.
Will you update this, cause it says payoff is twenty-three. That way it shows that that's completed in this report.
But it was after the end of fiscal year.
I think we still owe thirty-something at the end, and it was paid off after, yes, ma'am.
Cause I know we paid that off.
Yeah, it was paid off subsequent to the end, so it would, it would be reflected in the next time frame. Anyway, the, the other departments, again, street, park, senior center, fire department activities that are running through the general fund, all that kind of flows over to forty-two. So I am gonna go back through all the detail on that, if you have questions later. Page forty-four has that little section of grant funds, we closed two or three of those out. And finally got some zeros on some of these columns, so that hopefully starts to tighten some of this up a little bit. Going forward, it's just been a long process with some of that, I know. There was some cops grant money, did we close that out afterward, we were talking about it? So a couple of these little things, if we can close them out before September this year, how to get them off the books before we get to twenty-twenty. Some of those are holdover accounts, but the commercial development account, we still were kind of holding some funds there along with that old super grant, so. I really don't, if you haven't used them, I'd, they're The last two pages are forty-seven and forty-eight, and you actually have a pretty good bit of activity going on with your small accounts, so these are those special revenue accounts, like the new rebuild out, and the taxman and all that has to be maintained. We have to look at the compliance and how those funds are being spent, but you had over a hundred and five thousand in your street. At the end of September, if you look at page forty-seven, and you had a nearly fifty-six thousand capital improvement fund. Sixty-one thousand five ninety-three in the fire department, three-mill account, so you some, some nice balances there that kind of helped, if you went back, I didn't go over it, but if you went back, your fund balances overall on the governmental side were like within two hundred and something dollars, zero even. General fund was awful a bit, cause we spent some money on some equipment, debt service and things like that. And a lot of these accounts kind of offset that, so. And if you think about it, yes, these are all the special revenue accounts, but your street accounts, that's really general functions, general government function. Capital improvement, you can use really any department, it's just gotta be for fixed assets, and then your three-mill tax and fire department account, that one's yeah, again, that's, that's the one that's coming in good, we took in sixty thousand in that account and had a balance. Little over sixty at the end of September, so that, that can help with equipment, cause that's a, that can be a big drain on general funding. So that's, that's gonna be a real plus for you going forward, so. That's a quick overview, there's a lot of information in there, but had a good year on last year's financials for sure overall, and you know. If your cash balances and your reserves kind of reflect that.
So not only water department on the meter deposit? Were they about double what they have to have in that account? Can that be moved to their, to their general fund?
It can, it can, any excess equipment being moved over. And that might, if you think about it, you're getting to the point where it's kind of low, and you've been maybe have to think about paying something out of the general or whatever, there's some funds sitting there, you would have to tack the general fund over.
You and I had actually talked about that, and I'm in the process of getting that transferred.
And we've had, I don't know what your meter, each customer we have, if you remember roughly.
We need to keep about twenty-five thousand, you know, covering our meter deposits.
How many customers?
Many customers.
We have eight hundred and three.
We've had a fair number of municipalities on the way to deposits in general, they're just called connection charges. One time upfront, it's the same money, but it just goes in revenue and then you get that deposit liability off the books, and that's just, that's, that's to be managed in that regard. That's the trend right now, I know your billing and collections are a little different than the entity that does that for you. So that, you know, might or might not be as functional to do that, but certainly that
Would you say thirty percent of our customers don't even have a deposit because they had meter since the deposit was even put in place?
Outside the box, we've had a couple of municipalities aware of the system. They just refunded the deposit, so this went on. They just refunded, went down, here's what everybody's depositing out on the books, is selling their money back, and then they just went to the connection route and, and just don't even keep up with that anymore.
Have to do that to go to the connection?
You wouldn't have to do that, what you'd have to, if you, if you don't refund it, you've got to obviously maintain, because they're due that money back or have it applied to their bill at a later date, so.
Is any of the municipalities do a reconnect fee, and that way it's not reimbursable? You do a flat where you don't have a initial fee, and that way you're not owed it, and if they're get their water turned off, they have to pay a reconnection fee. And that way that, that's better trackable.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of where I was going, is you just, you gotta figure out what you wanna do with your old deposits that are already in there. You wanna kind of let that bleed down over time, or again, a couple of places, which is what most people have been. A couple of places have just said, hey, we've got the money sitting here, it was set in reserve. Send it back, but it's, again, you'd lose that little bit of security for somebody that leaves and owes, and then you don't have that hundred dollars anymore. Cause you gave it back to them, but I, you know, it's, you don't have a, you don't have a really large balance or a risk, so either way you chose to do it. And certainly, over time, would simplify that process.
Do we not have a reconnect fee now?
We do, we have fifty-dollar reconnect fee if their water's turned off. And once we turn it back, I would say fifty-dollar reconnect fee, and that money goes straight into the general account.
Yeah, you, right, no, what we were talking about was just if you went away from the deposit system, and you would just have an initial connection, initial connection fee, whatever that would be. Typically about what a deposit is now, but maybe you, you may adjust a little bit up, flatten it out, cross the border, whatever. Just something to think about, another you have to do is function and find this like it is. To the mayor's question, Carl's point, you, you had excess funds in that savings, so that could be utilized in your water department's general account for cash flow and just, you know, regular use.
Thank you for showing us how good we are.
Well, keep up the good work, and it is, it is a lot to manage, so there, there's, there's plenty there to do, and really, it's a design, but you just in the auditory minds that are going, you know, you don't have enough separation of duties as it is. You know, with all the different departments and things you're trying to run, it's, it just creates a higher risk that any mistake can be made, and things don't function like they should, and then there's, you know, you know, get time spent. Fortunately, the mayor's here pretty regular and, and, you know, but I got a lot of places where maybe that is not the case. And the clerk then really does come, fall back into almost a CFO kind of position. And, and I have others where they're really managing a lot of stuff without a very much of an active mayor role. It just varies from place to place, and that's okay, but it, it puts a lot of burden on one or two people. And you don't get to, and at that point, if they're really doing all the other work they need to do, you don't have any management. Side, help going on, there's no focus on that, fortunately, you don't, in that critical spot in that regard, but it's but have some where the clerks wish the mayors were around a little bit more. Cause they're trying to do all this work and then being tasked, or a lot of management load's been, been on too. So that's just things, again, to be mindful of that, I guess from my audit perspective, that's kind of my number one thing, really for you this year, and probably a lot of the clients we have is, is, there's a little, is this, as we just see in all the things that happen with collections and things, you know, those are every four years, but there's a process building up to it, and there's a time closing out after, it just takes time.
Anything else in questions? For such comment, darling.
Well, if somebody else will remind me to get you the PDFs, and I know he's looking for, I think, the last, yeah, three years. The hard copies, okay?
Yes.
So you may already have extra copies, but if you don't, let me know, I can send them. Y'all have a good night.
Well, as y'all heard, we had a pretty, pretty good audit, so always glad to get that news.
Out of all that, I like the quarterly, I'm six months having somebody to, just as a thought. Look it over, make sure our wheels is not getting in the ditch, and we're not knowing about it too late. That's, that's probably a pretty good idea. I know it cost us a little more money, but it could save us money, it's a whole lot of headaches too.
And Brenda comes up here, Allen County.
That's good.
She's been coming for a long time.
She's done it a while.
I don't know what any of these towns will do when she's gone.
She helps merely all of them in the county. All right, little motion to accept the audit. Second.
Second.
All in favor? All right, item number two, Greg Gunion, the chairman of the water board is here tonight, gonna give us an update. They're trying to do a deal with USDA.
I mean, uh,
ADM, ADM. And, uh, kind of get current with some meters and
If you heard what Don said, we have an outdated system. Bad outdated. I've sort of since, since we sort of, we tried to put in for a grant a couple of years ago, and, and, and didn't get it. And so I've been trying to find a way that we could improve our aging water system. Most of our stuff has been in the ground since the eighties. So, um, I got up with Caleb down at Goodwin Mills in Cablewood, and they, there's some money available, it's SRF loan, and what that is, is you have a, it's, it's a problem through ADM, and you have the opportunity to get that forgiveness. So we just throwed out, you know, like replacing all our meters, all of our service lines, redoing the water line over there, can you have the products on railroad, just put some numbers together and submitted it, well, we got approved for it. Fifty percent debt forgiveness. So anyway, we come back, sort of crunched everything, got everything down to detail, and the, and the piece of paper that I've given you is, is the, the total amount of the project minus the principal forgiveness. And then the loan amount will be the five oh nine seventy-five. We added the, the tank on twelve, the altitude valve, I can show you on my phone. We can only get eighty-five percent of water in our three water tanks. So the altitude valve is messed up, and, and to, the, the price to get it rebuilt versus a brand new and with a year warranty was about three thousand dollars, so it was better just to get a new one with a warranty than it is to get a, keep an old one if you don't know how long it's gonna last, so. Added it to it, but anyway, this is the total amount of the project. We done sort of a income analysis, and you figure your, your repairs that it costs you monthly, plus, like Don said, our water loss. And we're gonna generate somewhere around fifty-four hundred dollars income per month. If you take what our, what our water loss is, and you divide that with what they try to, or subtract that to try to, try to figure out what, um, their goal is to get it around fifteen percent, which is the state regulation for ADM, fifteen percent. Our water loss runs about thirty-five percent. So you take twenty percent off of that, plus you calculate how much you sell water for, and you come up with it, we come up with thirty-seven hundred dollars. So far this year, we spent a little over ten thousand dollars just in supplies to fix leaks. So you divide that up in six months, and, and you come up with pretty close to fifty-four hundred, matter of fact, fifty-four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-six. Our payment will be, on the second page of that, it'll have, it has the interest rate, which is two point two percent through ADM. And then the loan payment is twenty-six, forty-eight, forty-three. So we will have, you know, we'll, we'll generate twice as much, you know, we could, we can after the loan payment's made, we'll have another, a, a, a net profit of twenty, about twenty-five, twenty-six hundred dollars.
Is that taken into account escalation for raises and stuff over the twenty-year period?
Well, um, their ADM is gonna do their own thing, it's like, it's like Don talked about, um, they're gonna do a rate study. We'll have to see, we've sort of, me and media have called us sort of, called around to other towns to sort of see how competitive we are with them. We're right about number three right now, well, our water, you know, we're, we're within the top three. So I don't think they're gonna force us to raise our water rates at this time. I think with, with cut our water loss plus our, 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 um, maintenance bill, I think, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll be in, in real good shape. Cause we're, the last three months, our water bill, he talked about a water bill, the cost of water costing. It was back around, me and Darla talked about this today, uh, January and February, little water bill was about twenty-six, it's been running about twenty now.
Well, if you're losing thirty-five percent, I mean, that's water you've bought and paid for that's getting through the meter, that you're not getting a return on.
We carried last year, we replaced, um, over here on Green Street, back behind the funeral home. We replaced several old meters over there, and we carried them to Hailable, they have a testing station over there, and we was losing around twenty to twenty-two percent through our meters. Around twenty to twenty-two percent through our meters, that's water going through the meters that we're not getting paid for. And so uh.
That would make up or not, keeping the rates where they're at.
Right, and so um, we've gotta do something, our system's getting older and older, um, ten thousand dollars this time. Next year, you know, the next six months, it may be twenty thousand. But, but all of our system is old, it's, I would say probably the, the newest thing we have in the ground is gonna be down two fifty-three. And I know it was put in in the eighties, the late eighties. And and it's the same way with Don talking about our sewer, eventually, ten or fifteen years down the road. We will have problems, just like we own the water right now. And there, over the last ten years, there hasn't been an effort. To maintain or upgrade our water system, it's pretty much stayed the same, they just took the money in and. Tried to patch here and patch there and we need a major rubber haul. All of our main lines are PVC, all of our service lines is either cheap copper that's been in the ground or, or old poly. We're gonna go strictly with all pecs. Touch rate meters.
The mains are good.
Only, the only uh, me and Tabby talked today, the only cast iron line that I know that's in our whole system. Is a stretch from the water department to the end of the parking lot at the old Ranger Sewing Plant. They're old, the sewing plant's still tied on to a cast iron line, everything else is PVC.
Greg, have y'all figured anything in on labor?
This is labor, this is Carnegie, this is everything. This is the whole nine yards.
Contracted out, we won't do.
We won't do nothing, it's all contracted out. The, the, the hot, the software, uh, there'll be a computer put in a vehicle. Uh, you know, once they do the readings, it'll go straight to that computer and then they'll come back, download into Manny's computer. It just takes the human element out of it.
What's the cost of repairing a meter once it goes bad, Greg?
Um, these have a fifteen.
These are electronics.
These have a fifteen year warranty on them, they're census meters, um, they're the most accurate meter after, they're ninety-nine point two percent accurate. That means if you drip of water comes out of that faucet, it's gonna pick it up.
Now, for its calibration, we send them back off if one gets out of calibration?
The, the manufacturer has a guy, cause we, we've put in some chicken house meters that are census meters that uh. Calibration was off on ahead, they send the guy out here, calibrate them on the spot.
What about, can, can, will they be able to read them?
They'll, they'll come to a pound and a half of what they read.
But they'll actually have to still go to the box?
Still go to the meter and the reason why, we could do the drive-bys, but we find ninety percent of our leaks. Getting out of that truck and walking to a meter box.
Well, the other, the other thing that you and I talked about is, right now, a lot of these meters are in areas that are not very well accessible. And they're not per code either. Some of them right outside somebody's house, which is not supposed to be, it's supposed to be.
They'll all be moved back.
And so all this will be moved back to a better act, cause I mean, I worked with a couple of times trying to find something, it was a nightmare. I mean, it's a nightmare.
There's a lot that the meters right up against the house, which is not, everything is supposed to be on a utility railway.
Now, now, when, when this happens, we may have some homeowners that get upset. Because it's going to go back to the code and it means our service lines will be, we'll just have to patch and move it back down to the.
Yeah, they're gonna use, it's listed in here, they use PVC, uh, Skidoo forty PVC. To, to reattach the service line back to.
What about the leader that, my homeowner be responsible for that or?
From, no, will, will, all, all the meters will be set, um, and they'll tie their, the, the. The customers line back into the meter, the homeowner won't be responsible for nothing.
So in other words, if you got a meter that's fought up next to somebody's house that's supposed to be out here, you cut this one in. Then you cut this one out and put a splice into it and it joins it back together and that way they, you know, it's right down where it's supposed to be at.
All, all of them will have check valves on them, um, nearly ever, well, everyone we've put in now and everyone we have put in since I've been on the board. Has a check valve, chicken houses are mandatory to have check valve because they do wells. Uh, but I want a check valve on every single one of them because. If somebody had a well drilled and they tied in where they could have either a well or city water, we don't need well water in our system. So we, this is all new check valves, uh, every service will have locate water put in it, where right now, most of them don't have it. Um, this is the whole. The whole thing.
So when you, when you say tying into their house, no matter what they have, if they've got copper or PVC. Will adapt to it and tie the pecs into it?
Yes, and um, if you noticed on number seven, that says a thousand and sixty-seven. That's how many total accounts we have, we have eight, was it eight hundred and what many? It varies from month to month, people. We have about eight hundred and three. Um, we have replaced some, if you notice on line two, that's seven hundred twenty-two meters. We have replaced some in our areas that we know, um, was, was defaulted, whether it wasn't registered. Or a new customer come in, we went ahead and put a new meter, new service line in that place. But that thousand and sixty-seven number is all these empty lots that has a meter on it, they're gonna put a new service line. A new meter box and a new check valve and new curb stop. So we'll, it, you know, when, when somebody builds a new house and one of these empty lots out, we have to do stick a meter in the ground and be done.
What is the deadline?
Um, my, we voted today to, or tonight to um, to, to the, for the contract with us and them. Um, he'll come pick it up, we submit all that to A D M. Our goal is maybe by November, December to bid it out and start the project, maybe after the first year.
So when, when do you need the town to give? Yes or no, or what, I mean?
Probably, probably pretty quick, cause he's going to, he's going to submit this to A D M, um, you know, he done a, he done a pre-application. Um, right now, we're at the stage where they require, you know, to do all the, the um, selecting of a, a engineering firm. Uh, we done all that, so, so, you know, he's gonna submit all of that and then A D M's gonna say. Art, this is your next step, which is gonna be a complete application, that's why I talked to Don, we're gonna need the last three audits. Um, then they'll do a rate study, then they'll, they'll do their own um, uh, income analysis. So you know, would me and, me and Caleb's been just trying to do this stuff to try to sort of see what we're gonna be. Before it gets down there and, and we both seem to think that everything's gonna be fine.
So what's your name for us today is uh, for everyone to do the, the analysis?
Yes, just to, just to, just to move forward.
I know it's probably in here, but how, how much debt do y'all have on the books right now?
It's on there in the back page. Yeah, if I remember, it's, pardon, posting or file.
It'll be out, long for all that paper. That we got broke off with.
What's your current net that you're making profit wise right now, not counting into your losses? That's saying you're not having a rate increase.
Probably, Carl, what, what was it? Ten last month?
Ten thousand?
Yeah, last month.
And then that includes uh, the two thousand, I think it's two thousand dollar payments, what it was, what I read. It's a little over two thousand something dollars.
And that was, that was a ten year note, what, down there, so, so it's, it's probably pretty close to four years. Well, be right there, February, I believe is when.
It's two hundred and three thousand dollars and the payment's twenty-six hundred, is what it is. So if you could pay down that, some of that right there, I mean, that's even good to, to start doubling that.
We might do this fast, but the loan, the loan amount is five oh nine seventy-five. And the forgiveness amount is four ninety-nine.
That's, that's the most they'll go is four ninety-nine, it was, it was dead on, they, it was equal four ninety-nine each. Until I added that uh altitude valve on twelve. We've gotta get our tanks, right now, we're losing about forty thousand gallons in our water tanks. Because we can't fill to two ninety, usually they want about ninety-five percent, I'll show you what. Cause I'm pulling up right here, I'll show you what our water tanks are doing.
When it takes one chicken house that has a two inch line of rupture. Greg and I, two years ago, it took a day to find that leak on four, on razors. I mean, we, the tanks had got down to less than fifty percent.
We were fortunate, there was twenty-one small towns put in for this program. And two of us got accepted for fifty percent debt forgiveness. Because the, the actual beginning of the project before I had that altitude valve would have come out to, it was like, well, I've got. It's in my truck, the old one was um. Nine hundred ninety-one thousand or something and so uh, the most they'll go up to is four hundred ninety-nine thousand debt forgiveness. Which before I added that valve was half of, uh, but I'll show you soon as this thing pulls up.
Now, when they add these lines in, they're gonna go way below our freeze point, even though our freeze point normally, we're still getting into colder temperatures. And that'll help also with the.
Every one of them have uh locate water, they'll go a GPS coordinates where it's tapped on the main and a GPS coordinates where the meter's set. And it'll be put on, I, we can, I can pull up our whole system on this phone. Uh, matter of fact, they, they kinda got sewer out last week and they're gonna overlay it on, so everything. That's in the utility system will be on, you can look it up on the phone. But right here is what our water level is right now, that's our water tank. The most we can put in here is eighty-five point one percent. By fixing that altitude valve, we can raise it to ninety-five percent, which is forty more thousand gallons of water.
You said our total capacity that we could hold in gallons is, in all four tanks.
And, and I'll, I'll explain to that, but when we get this, this other tank online. Um, it'll be uh, we'll have right at seven hundred thousand gallons of water. In the town Hackleburg, which is huge for a small town.
What, what does the GPS track right now, Greg, that we got?
Do what, who does it?
Yeah, I mean, how much does it cover, what we have right now, we've got put in after the storm?
Uh, he could, our whole system is on it, our whole system is on it, uh, the previous board, well, not the previous, back when Doug was mayor. They had a, a, Frankie County G I S come in and they done the whole system. And so um, me and Mikey's been back and forth, every line that we put in, like the, the partial line down six. He'll come put it in, don't cost us nothing extra, we pay a three hundred dollar fee a month to the. Just to, just to do this, but it's, it's handy, um. It'll, it probably, it should pull right back up, but right here is our, right here is our, our, our water system on the phone. And you can blow it up, has every valve, every fire hydrant, every meter, six inch, two inch, one inch, it has everyone up month. And our sewer should be on hopefully in a, in a couple more weeks, but um, we got to move forward. You know, our, our system's old and, and now I think basically, it's costing uh, it's gonna cost us. Five hundred thousand dollars to do a million dollars worth of work and I think right now is the best time in the world to do it.
Well, if we're, if we're having a net, I'll do us a little bit of calculation, if we have twenty percent loss and we increase that loss and our net's ten thousand. We should see an increase of additional two thousand if you did basic math. So that'd bring it up to twelve, that should cover the cost on it.
Be close to covering the payment.
Cover, you'll recover the payment, huh?
Oh yeah, yeah. And hopefully by then we'll have more, cause we're down to, we're eight hundred three customers, what you said on average, before the storm, we were over twelve hundred customers. So if we slowly start building more, we should start increasing.
Doug have done this same project, um, and their water loss, um, matter of fact. Of course, their water loss was higher than ours, it was over fifty percent. Um, so far this year, it hasn't been above fifteen percent. They generated just enough revenue off of water loss to make two payments a month on their loan. And, and you know, it could, this is just, you know, this is just uh. Yeah, just, but, but, we feel possibly that we're gonna.
It, it's not a, it's a positive impact towards our budget, the negative impact is gonna, you're gonna have some upset people at first. Until they transition because their parent, their water bill, let's say that it was running fifty dollars a month, now then it's gonna be running sixty dollars a month. Why did my water bill go up? Well, it went up because we've got better technology. You wait, you wait till they go to real time meter, they're starting that also with power companies, that's coming too.
But we just, you know, we have the option, the, the drive-by meters are higher, um. But, and, and, and you could do it all, Hackleburg, you probably did it all in half a day, it just makes more sense, you know. They can do it with this touch read, um, probably in a day and a half and they're still going out there visually looking at everything. And most customers are gonna say, well, they didn't read my meter, if you drive by them and say they didn't read my meter. If they're going out there and touching the top of that meter, you know, the customer's still seeing somebody after a meter box. And, and it just makes things a whole lot better.
It's all go, also gonna reduce your risk of people getting spider bit and snakes. And everything, so, cause they live in those.
Last year, Jason like got bit by a copperhead at, at Rocky Top, you know, just grace of God that, that he didn't run his hand down in there. But, you know, it's just, it's just overall gonna be better, I think, for the water park.
I mean, at some point, we, we've got to transition to a better system, I mean, it, it's only getting worse, it ain't getting better. I mean, you're, you're not gonna get a whole lot of fifty-fifty grants, so, and that's basically what you're getting.
So I'll make a motion. Okay.
Move forward.
To move forward.
And what, what this is, it's not saying, you know, absolutely, but when all the numbers, you hit them and you come back, you know, then. We'll vote again. I, I think if it works out like you're saying, we'd all be for it, I, I would think.
Yeah, it's, it's like me and Caleb talked about, the only one thing that will change, probably come in less. Is the service keeping, because, and I'll use an example, um. Dee Hudson's house, his meter, his service line is a little over a hundred feet long. You go to somebody that has a water line running right in their front yard and their meters here, it's ten foot. So it's hard to, to get a true estimate on how many feet of, of service line it's gonna take, so he estimated. He estimated it high and hopes when everything is done that the price will be less. And so that's all we could go by, you can't go by, you know, and, and measure each individual service line, that, you know.
It just, they have like a twenty, twenty or thirty percent over here or something like that.
That would be the only, it won't be no more than this, it'd be less, but it won't be no more than this.
When we have a new customer come on and they build a house or whatever and they, they're ready to run their line. Are we telling them when they come to pay their connection fee, you have to use pecs, you can't?
We ain't, um, but, but that's something that we need to. We need to go to, the only difference is, um, the, the transition from. The meter to, like, like we have access to, to different types of pecs fittings for underground. Most homeowners won't, cause you can't go to Lowe's and buy a, a pecs fitting that's guaranteed underground.
But I mean, if we do this, from that point on, we'll need to make sure they don't come in and run PVC or whatever.
Now, on the other side of the service connection, is it gonna be pecs also?
On our side, now the customers, whatever they got in the ground.
I, I understand that, but on the, is it not a normal three-quarter inch tap?
It's three-quarters, yes.
Okay, okay.
What we usually do when we set a meter is put a, a, a three-quarter or a one inch, depending on, a lot of people wanna run one inch. Even though it's a three-quarter meter, they'll run a one inch line to their house and we'll put a, put a uh, metal adapter on the end of it where they just glue their pipe in it and go with it. We don't want them messing with any, any part of that meter.
You done a good job of explaining it, I think. Getting everybody caught up and.
Um, and, and another thing, good Lord's willing, Wednesday our new water tank will be on, it'll be pumping water out. Would have been today, but um, um Chester, the guy that's gonna put the SCADA system in, which is a. A thing that'll correspond with this tank over here by the funeral home. Uh, couldn't get the radio over here to Wednesday morning, so we're gonna do it Wednesday morning, so. It'll be up and running, first time since it was put in the ground.
How many years?
Two thousand fourteen.
Uh, for y'all wanna make a.
I made the motion, leave a second.
Tabby made the motion, Kevin seconds. All in favor? Alright, item three, uh, discuss fourth of July. You know, they're, they're encouraging social distancing, so. You know, uh, depending on how many people we get here, you know, all, all we can do is encourage it, we can't. Go and arrest people for not doing it, but they want us to mark off six foot sections or people sit in their vehicle. You know, the CDC, e- everything they do is a recommendation, I mean, it's not a requirement, so. We'll do all we can to do our part. You know, some people wear masks and that, that would be probably a good idea. No, they're not. Because we're probably not gonna have any music or anything, we're just gonna have the fireworks show at nine. You know, the ice cream guy called today and wanted to come.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Mandy told him no.
Cause he had told me before he couldn't come.
Yeah, they're, somebody canceled wherever he is.
You know, at Coleman, they done a, instead of doing the Rock the South, which was supposed to occur. They done a, a drive-through where Alan Jackson had his stage set up and everybody was sitting in cars. And it, that seemed to have worked, you know, they just didn't have as much, um. The festival was not long, it was a one night thing, you know, just to get people involved.
But I, I guess I'm kinda asking y'all's opinion, do you wanna do any kind of music, like start at five thirty or?
I wanna do away with the fireworks and get that ice cream up here.
It may be too late for that.
You, you could do. A portable thing and then he'd have to put X's. And have people spaced out before they come up to the counter, you're following guidelines if you do that. I mean, that's.
And I mean, we, we can do music.
How, how do you, how much, how much people do you think's gonna come out to it, that's the question. How many people's gonna sit in a car and run this?
Probably sit in their car, probably not any young people. Um, some older people will, I, I would think, Don would probably sit in his vehicle.
I would, if I can't hear it, I'll roll my windows up and I, I'll sit in.
What about the, are we seeing much uh. Publicity on Facebook of wanting to do the fireworks or?
Well, they. Scott had a pretty good headline in the paper, but the show was gonna go on, so.
You see how big it's been getting every year?
A good thing excluded all of us, but this.
They gonna have to work like something there?
Some of the schools, um, cheered on your group for wanting to do a color run and. Do some other things, but I don't think that.
I'm okay with that, I don't, I don't think the town oughta be involved in it, if they wanna do it.
We can mark off.
We'll, we'll mark, we'll close the road, whatever, you know, that we can, but. I don't think we need to be a part of that, do you? I mean, if they wanna take it on. We would support them, but.
Is it the one that's got the, that was at Watermelon Festival with the churn, the tractor churn?
He's been here a couple of times.
That ice cream dude?
That's not the one that's calling, but he has been here before.
Oh, we gotta get him.
I don't even know how to get in touch with that man before. Well, this guy that comes, he's Mr. Hocken, he's good. And his dad usually grounds the meal also.
But i- if y'all wanna do live music, we need to know tonight where I can. Get it lined up.
I don't think you'll have turnout. No, I, I think you will for turnout, but I don't think for the music. I think you will for the fireworks.
Keep it to the fireworks.
Uh, that's fine with me either way. Yeah, we, we might could get Kenny to set up with the system and do. Alright.
And what time, they gonna go off at nine o'clock?
Probably. Beginning of July, which is coming up. All of us, if you get a day off, we need to kinda mark off, you know, six foot. Spaces all the way through town as much as we can.
That's only if they're standing outside, if they're inside they're.
They're gonna be, the, the young people are gonna be.
That's gonna be tough.
Dean, it's cause they'll be going every direction.
That's right, nah. All you do is just sell them, don't.
Enjoy it and don't be hooking up on each other and.
Stay with your family and your close significant other or whatever, and then do that.
We can make it work. Alright, so no mu- no live music. And if the ice cream guy wants to come, and he, he may not, since we're not really doing anything before that. So. Alright. Put that to bed. Alright, item number four, we need to. People's Trust, they're, they're gonna fund this grant. From a DECA and ALDI. And um, once we get the council check back from where we've paid them, then we'll send it to ALDI and a DECA for reimbursement. And once we get the money back, we'll pay the bank note. Of course, there'll be a little bit of interest on it.
Yeah, that's what I was calculating, since it's a hundred days. Cause for a year it's nine thousand.
Can we do that without bidding?
Yeah. Yeah, you don't have, I mean, all we're doing is loaning the money, I mean, or borrowing the money. For a short amount of time. So. Everybody oughta have a copy of the resolution. Twenty twenty dash zero zero six and just kinda lays out. From the bank. The amount and uh. Kinda how they've structured the payback and interest rate and all that.
What's the expected date to receive the checks from a DECA and uh, ALDI?
They bill at the end of the month, so we will probably get a bill. We could get the uh, DECA bill at the end of June, but the ALI, they, they won't invoice that till the end of July. So we won't borrow the money from the bank until we need it to pay the invoice, so. We're not gonna like get it tomorrow and just be hanging on to it, you know.
So the project's expected to be finished by July?
Yeah, it won't take, it won't take them long, weather permitting.
So it's two point nine thousand plus five hundred dollar documentation fee?
Yeah. Which is gonna be pretty standard, any bank you go to. And Carla will be on the hook for the money if we can't pay it back, so. No need to worry about that.
They can put our house up.
Yeah. Bo, Sam. Alright.
Can you keep that as a, since we're having to track this also to maintain our budget of four hundred three thousand dollars? Keep that as a running, open business on our agenda each meeting till this is closed out, that we're tracking that. You know, that's.
I mean, we can, but we need to pass this resolution.
I know, I'm saying we pass it, but we still keep the um, resolution on here, not the resolution, but the budget part on here. Cause we need to be monitoring that closely. That we don't run our budget.
I don't, I don't think we'll make it from meeting to meeting to have to do that, but, cause once they come in here and. Get to laying down asphalt, they're, they're gonna be. Probably, uh, weather permitting, they'd be done in a week, don't you think?
Well, he talked in this meeting here, the other day, every day he'll have a closeout.
Yeah, but somebody gotta be looking at that closeout to make sure that we don't go over that mound.
And uh. Don, he, he pretty much said a week if everything went right, didn't he, they'd be finished up. And they did move uh, some equipment up here today. So need a motion to pass the resolution?
Motion.
Aaron, second. Eugene. All in favor? Alright, item five, set the cost of qualification fees for the upcoming municipal election.
Uh, the last election, it was twenty-five dollars for um, a council member and fifty dollars for a mayor candidate.
Y'all okay leaving them where they are, y'all wanna change them up?
How many, you know, when more than this, where does that go, in general fund or?
Yeah.
It goes back to election fees, we use it against what we have to pay for the ballots.
If you're done like commissioner raises ten percent, where you get about thousand bucks off of it?
Uh, the only, I mean, I, I wouldn't think it would be unreasonable to raise the mayor to a hundred. But the council always seem to have a harder time getting people to run, I don't know. I mean, we can do whatever y'all want to, but.
What's your cost of the ballots and stuff on average?
Seems like it's around twenty-five hundred dollars.
But if we're tied to a. State or nation, you know, any of that, does it weigh because we'd be on the same as that, wouldn't it?
This is strictly for qualifying?
No, 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 I'm talking about, you're getting, you're getting your ballots, cause when the ballots comes out, the general election for the president's gonna be going on too.
I thought you said balance.
No, no.
Well, no, it, it's a certain company that we get from all of the cities, um. It seems like.
I wouldn't care, man, it don't matter.
Eugene. They motioned on second, all in favor? July seventh would be the first day of qualifying. Or run through the twenty-first, I think.
Our records is gonna be doing free candidate profiles, one time, so they'll submit those. First time.
If you want two or three of them, you gotta pay. Uh, item six, I think we gotta double it up. I don't wanna just discuss it again if we don't have to, but. One thing, before we adjourn, we got a certified letter today from Waste Management. They're saying they're giving written notice of their intention to not renew the above referenced contract. At the end of its current term on Saturday, October thirty-one, twenty twenty. I've never seen a contract. And I've heard we've never had one.
I did a little research, um. I found in two thousand eleven in a meeting. It stated that they did not have a contract or they had never seen one. And um, so apparently it was just like a, an agreement and it wasn't a, a contract.
Just a verbal.
Uh, just a verbal, because in that.
Wouldn't previous individuals working for them?
Yeah, they, they probably read the paper or something where they're talking about. Um, maybe looking at.
So when, when is this contract due?
October thirty-first.
So that means they're not gonna be picking up any garbage after that?
Uh, well, then they go on to say they would like to participate in the bid for the next contract. We can either bid it.
That may be that they lower them down, we just have to see what they say.
So anyway, you know, we can bid it, we can talk to the county, uh, we can look at doing our own. Well, we need to look at all three of them, to be honest.
Yeah, we need to do something too.
Well, we discussed that, we was first letting, and then while we did our own, so it's too much liability, too tall, tall too much. Some probably got three or four times, bet what's available, now we're facing loads this.
We should have listened to Eugene.
Plenty of lawyers, we got like three, four times, seven, eight times.
How, you gotta look at how long it takes the route to do it, are we gonna do the garbage cans, there needs to be an analysis done on it. And then see what it is, and then that way you look at feasibility, cause the last time we talked, it was ten thousand dollar fee. We making about eleven thousand dollars, so there should be a thousand dollar profit in there to cover all that, and so it could be cost effective. Don't know, cause you've never done an assessment on it. There needs to be an assessment done. What you can do is you can, you can hire a salt company coming here for a thousand bucks and do it. I know, but we got an issue that we gotta figure out what's going on.
We can't even get a master address list.
Well, if we took it over, you'd have a master address list, because at that point, you would be doing your own routing, and you could say who's doing what. And that way you do that analysis on it, cause you said it was seventeen dollars.
But that's not around far a garbage truck.
Done that three times.
Done that.
Well, we have roads where the county picks up and the town picks up.
They run the same route. So every which one gets to it first may pick it up. We don't know who's paying for it.
Jurisdictional boundaries is our town, within our city limits. And so if we've got, um, seven hundred, whatever it was. That's what you should have, and then if they're outside of that city limits.
We talked about this today, like down February one. They's uh, that's city limits. But they some like to not come into city limits, so the county picks up through garbage.
Well, they can continue to do it.
But the town charging us for it too.
It's what should be happening, and they physically do, but we don't know if we're paying for it or not. Cause we can't get a. Cause we can't get a list of addresses we're getting paid or charged.
County ain't gonna pick mine up, boys, man, but don't get it set there for the dog, sir. Holler up by the county shop in New York. And that's it over way back when while they eating a major sandwich. The dog ripped him a garbage up.
Holler, we'll get one of our part time.
You had them nice green garbage cans, they wouldn't be doing it, cause everything would be inside of it.
Buy you a garbage can.
I could, somebody give you one, I'd be done at night with a trainer or Lacy or whatever it is over there.
Give one of them. It's one of our seven part time employees, might've. Who oughta we work part time? Who are our seven?
Well, I don't know, every time I come up here, it's been somebody hard. Ron and Elra, we got the Hudson boy. Looks like, and I don't know who else has seen him, it's.
I think you rounded it up right there.
We got two full time, that's five.
That's four.
Three and two, five, anyway, yeah.
Who you getting through?
Ron, Hudson. And we got Hudson, we getting on up there now, about six. I'm trying to come up one more.
What are you trying to count out?
We don't have seven part time.
You can't, the police department.
Well, you gotta have part time.
Are you talking about street department or what are you talking about?
It don't matter, we've been way more when we get work and all that.
Oh, well, anyway.
Hey, by the way, the park looks.
I think the guy was doing a good job.
I know it's not on the agenda, but the, the park looks awesome. Um, we went over and had a little playdate and everything. It's, it's improving a lot, so I know that we had on the agenda a while back, but then we had the COVID hit about, um, Contour wanting to put a basketball court over there. We still need to follow up with that process and see what we're gonna do with them, because I, I was looking in an area that we might could put it at. And, um, go ahead and see if we can't get that moving, cause it's looking real good. They're keeping that whole area, even the pavings is cleaned up. And then, and they had their first little ball game over there this week, so. The kids were excited.
We need two of them grills, two new ones. And if you had them, people would come over there and use that a lot.
We got all the lots.
So if we need to buy them, let's buy them, if we don't, let's let Ring go buy them.
The, I know, the only thing I noticed, there's not enough garbage cans on the exterior as part of it, cause there was some little bit of trash around the walking trail. So if we could put some, few more cans out, that would be good. But it's looking good.
Like sit down and they.
Yeah, they, they make the red ones, yeah, that would match the seats and stuff, yeah.
And you can get them from that company. We need to look at that.
They done changed the setting.
What is it?
He said I could make that motion now, I said they done changed the setting, kept them off my grills.
No, it ain't on the agenda, we're just talking in general.
But yeah, we, we do. We, we do need that, yeah.
We do, babe. They put one of them back up, but it ain't no camp. And they don't cost much, and we just put charcoal in on the curb right there.
What you got, Huddy? Hang on, let, let us adjourn and then you can. Let us adjourn and then you can. Need a motion to adjourn? Eugene, second. Tabby? All in favor? Okay, oh, okay.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty nine county news TV.